To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please take roll call for us, please? Steve Jarvis.
Here.
Phil Minor.
Here on the phone.
Jim Peterson.
Here.
John Johnson.
Here.
Okay, and Stacia, it looks like we have some folks that are on the phone, so could you please have them identify themselves? Callers, can you please identify your name for the record?
Tampa, Missouri, with Gunderson Palmer.
Daniel McNamara, here at City, South Dakota.
And in addition to Alderman Minor, that will be everyone that we also have on the call. Thank you. Okay, so rolling onto our agenda, conflict of interest. Council, you've got the opportunity to review the agenda and attachments. Are there any conflicts of interest that need to be noted at this point?
I'll be recusing myself on action item A.
Action item A, 5A?
Seven.
Or seven A, okay.
Action item seven.
Action item seven. Okay, okay. Okay, any other, any others? Okay, before we go into consent calendar, we do actually have something that I want to mention now that we will cover in the consent calendar. This, for this set of claims that we have received, there is a bill that is in there for attorney fees and services from our interim attorney Gunderson Palmer. There is a portion of the attorney bill that relates to Sunset Creek. It's a total amount of $721.50. So we will be addressing that in more detail when we come to the consent calendar and how that will be viewed. So with that being said, if there's no others, I'll go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. Do I have any conversation? Hearing none, before I ask for a motion, I'm going to reference back to that bill. The total amount of legal services is for $2,849.82. Of that, $721.50 is for the Sunset Creek work. So the total amount of the bill without the Sunset Creek work is $2,128.32. I would request that I receive a motion from council taking that into consideration. So the motion can be entered indicating approval for the consent calendar and the claims, with the exception of $721.50. Once that motion is seconded and voted on, then a motion can be entertained for the And then that motion can be seconded and voted on as well. So can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar with the $721.50 for Sunset Creek.
Ominous.
Out of it right now.
Okay, so I have a motion by Alderman Jarvis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Johnson. Roll call vote, please, Stacia. Jim Peterson.
Yes.
Phil Minor.
Yes.
John Johnson.
Yes.
Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, motion carried. Do we have a motion for the remaining $721.50?
So moved.
Motion from Alderman Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second, roll call vote, please, Stacia. Phil Minor. John Johnson.
Yes.
Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Jim Peterson.
I'll recuse myself.
Okay, all in favor with the recusal, motion carried. Before I move on to public comments, I just wanted to make a quick announcement. So you see the laptop in front of me today. The whole purpose of that is to be able to administer the go-to meeting. So we've entered into an agreement with a service that we will be using going forward for our teleconferencing services that we have. It's a hope of mine that eventually we'll be able to use it as a video conference tool as well, but we haven't quite gotten there yet. So in order to be able to execute the call, we need to do it from a laptop, so that's why you see it in front of me. The benefit that we have with this is I can see that there are callers on the phone, so we see who's on the phone, not necessarily by name, but I know that there's four lines that have been dialed up and we can confirm that. We also see when calls drop. And in the future, if there's a point in which we need to have the call muted, so I know we've had some conversations in the past where someone is on their end and they may be rustling papers or something like that, we can actually mute that so it doesn't disturb the rest of the meeting up here. So it does have some features. We're in our infancy stages using this, but that's why you will see that. All right, now I'd like to go ahead and get on into public comment. Members of the public may speak on any manner that is not on the agenda. Remarks are limited to three minutes per speaker. Please state your name.
My name is Connie Walters.
Thank you.
I'm a resident. This was kind of on the calendar, not on the counter. One of the things that you brought forward in this is transparency. And I am curious, I'm not curious, I just think that the public should know, the bill for Gunderson Palmer Nelson and, I'm sorry.
Ashmore.
Ashmore, it cut off, there were three line items. And just kind of a knowledge of what these are even for, if we're bringing it forward in the public thing, you know, most of the other bills, you know, I can tell you what they are for pretty much. They're very explained. But those three line items, the review of the plat, I don't know which plat, the legal fees, were they meetings, were they whatever? I did talk to Stacia a little bit, I guess there was one meeting in there for $500. But can you possibly give the people attending or whoever's interested in the business going on what that was about?
So Ms. Walters, we have actually enacted some meeting protocol relative to public comment associated with the rules for Robert's Rules of Order. In Robert's Rules of Order and the policy that we are adopting is that public comment is meant to be a comment-type period from anybody and we won't use it as open discussion. In order to remedy that, what we will do is if there's something that needs to be readdressed, Stacia will note it and we will take it back and then we will have it on a future agenda.
Yeah, okay.
So with this situation.
Transparency, that's what I'm asking for.
Absolutely. So transparency into the legal bills.
Yes.
And we'll make sure that we have that down and it is listed as a discussion item. Thank you, thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Hi, my name's Tim McTavish, I'm Black Hills Power Equipment out here.
Okay.
And I'm starting into a new venture and I'm going to give you this so you know what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
Personal transportation vehicles.
Thank you.
And when I get started in this, I checked in a little bit to see what the rules were in the city of Hill City for such things. And I found out that there was a couple of things that maybe could stand to be addressed or should at least be discussed. So I printed out a copy of the rule and the one and only that we should discuss.
Thank you.
And then also, there's a couple other sheets that I put on there.
Thank you.
One from the state of South Dakota, it seems to be short one, I'm sorry. So basically, bottom line is what we're talking about is personal transportation vehicle is somewhere between a golf car and a UTV. They're slow speed, very low emissions, quiet, neighborhood drive-around kind of machines. The city of Hill City says that all vehicles have to be licensed. These vehicles do not require to be licensed. State of South Dakota says it's, it's really not a car. So they don't require that. I did put a sheet in there that does show what the state of South Dakota rule is. It's very small print. Basically, it says that the municipality can write your own rules for these things.
Okay.
I also put a copy on there of a set of rules that I found that came from Augusta, Georgia, but it was just kind of a general policies of what they've adopted. And I think going forward, I think there's some room for this vehicle in Hill City, in our small communities, and I think it's something that we should look at embracing into our town. And that's really all I got. Take it into consideration, look it over and see if we can make some rules to invite these things in.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome. Do they have to be insured? Yes, they do. Yeah, that is one of the requirements, they do require liability insurance, yes. Yeah, but, and normal driver's license, yes. And according to the state, we, you can regulate and say that the only real road in town that's an issue is the highway. And the state says, you can say it's okay to put them on that highway, but you have to adopt that. In that Augusta, Georgia one, you know, they made a map of where you can and cannot go. We're pretty much wide open. You know, in a lot of more metro areas, of course, they think of these as a neighborhood transportation. Hill City is our neighborhood. You know, it's what we have. So, you know, there's a lot of travelers that bring them in their motorhomes, you know? I could see maybe in the future a connection between some of the campgrounds in town, you know? We let UTVs in town. The biggest gripe everybody has about UTVs, they're noisy and they make too much dust. These things do neither of those things. And they actually are suitable to drive on the ATV trails as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, then I'd like to go ahead and close public comment and get into action items. Action item A, 316 Forest Street, V2020-01 variance request for setbacks, age of mobile, Peters Brothers Matouche. Danny will walk us through this. Ms. Shade.
This variance application is for 316 Forest Street, it's up on the overhead. Applicants are moving out the old dilapidated trailer and want to move in a newer manufactured home. The building permit for the manufactured home has been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, subject to the variances being approved by City Council. There are two variances being requested. First one is to allow for a five-foot front yard setback. Current zoning requires a 25-foot front yard setback. The existing trailer is a single-wide, did not need a variance when originally set. Forest Street right-of-way is such that there is a hillside, an elevated situation in front, about four to six feet, starts going up in front of the property. And the rear of the lot has a several-foot hillside and then continues in elevation. You can kind of see on the board there, about Forest Street's about 5,040 in elevation and then the rear of that lot on the northeast is 5,080 feet, so a lot of 40-foot difference from front to back. Planning and zoning asked the owner if they had looked into excavating the rear of the lot and the owner said, yes, they've looked into it, but there are parts of the lot that are very solid and it would be extremely costly to do so. The second variant, or the second section of the variance request is a variance from Hill City Municipal Code Section 904.1B, which reads, "General Standards B, the age of the home shall not, shall be less than six years old from the date of manufacture." The applicant has a 2014 Mojave, 28-foot by 56-foot double-wide manufactured home they'd like to set on a pure foundation. The date of manufacture on this home was July 9th of 2013 and July 8th of 2019 would have been the last day that the home would have been in compliance if set. Home is missing the code compliance by less than 12 months. The proposed land use does not conflict with the intent or goals of Hill City's comprehensive plan. The proposed variance application generally meets the standards as set forth in Title IX. There's no flood hazard area on this property. Certified letters were sent out to all property owners within 150 feet of the subject property. Two comments have been received. Both state they do not have an issue or a problem with either variance request and we're very happy that the older single-wide was going to be removed. Planning and zoning commission has reviewed this variance request application, recommended their approval to City Council. And mayor, at this time, we should open it up to public comment, to anybody who came here to discuss this.
Okay, so before we do that, does the council have any questions that they'd like to pose to Danny on this request?
Then one to replace him with is pretty decent looking, since you didn't have any pictures.
Yes, yep.
Doesn't look like it's.
It's, looks very nice, actually.
Anything else, Ms. Shade? Okay, I'd like to then go ahead and open it up to public comment. If there's anybody that would like to speak to address anything in this issue, please feel free to come forward and state your name.
I'm Doug Peters of the Peters Brothers LLC. What's going on here is we're selling this lot to Moni Matouche and she is the one that's moving in the double-wide. The lot itself is just too tough of a one for a project for us to look at. A couple times in the past, we had John Tally look at it, Mark Nielsen look at it. You can see right to the right side on that image of those streaks of outcropping, there's a granite, a little granite shelf right down there in the bottom part. It could be excavated, but probably not at a cost that would be worth really whatever we would put up there. So that's why we're selling the lot and that's why Moni was asking for those variance, variances on it.
Okay, thank you.
One, I wasn't there, two mobile homes up there?
On the left side, the empty lot there, she's buying both of these lots. You guys remember Winston from Jamaica?
Mm-hmm.
Worked for us at the Best Western for many, many years. Remember the little green trailer? Was a dark green trailer that lived there. That's where Winston and his wife lived in the summertime. The summer that he worked for us. He loved that trailer boy, he was pretty disappointed with that one, we recycled it, it was old enough, it had real loon in it and stuff. This one, this one, not so much. That's the old landmark known as the old Butterfield.
Yeah, Butterfield trailer. Yeah.
If anybody's got any questions about it, other than that, I can.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Council, any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion from Alderman Johnson to approve the variance request for the setbacks in the age of the mobile. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Alderman Jarvis. Roll call vote, please, Stacia. John Johnson.
Yes.
Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Jim Peterson.
I'll recuse.
Phil Minor.
Yes.
Favorable, motion carries. Action item 7B, Resolution 2020-04, vacation of right-of-way Topo Hill Avenue. Ms. Shade.
This resolution is to vacate that portion of Topo Hill right-of-way that is not in use as Carta Topo Hill Avenue. The section of right-of-way, once vacated, will become part of the newly-platted bull-run subdivision and then part of it is going to go to 890 Topo Hill Avenue, which is Lot 2 of Shoot Rooster Track to the east. The vacation of this unused portion of Topo Hill right-of-way will also help correct an encroachment by structures on 890 Topo Hill. P&amp;Z Commission has reviewed the resolution, recommends their approval to City Council.
Gentlemen, any questions? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Would anybody like to speak or address this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion from Alderman Peterson, second from Alderman Johnson, roll call vote, please. Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Jim Peterson.
Yes.
Phil Minor. John Johnson.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carried. Action item 7C, Resolution 2020-05, final plat, P as in Peter, 2020-02, bull-run subdivision. Ms. Shade.
Brett, did you pass those?
Yep.
Okay, the subject lot is the lot approved for TIFF for an attainable housing project that will be developed by Jim Skull/Pink Cabin LLC. This will be a planned unit development with 40 lots and have a homeowners association and covenants. The plat has been discussed at the January 1st Planning and Zoning Meeting. The preliminary plat was approved at the February 3rd Planning and Zoning Meeting and the final plat was reviewed and approved at the February 18th Planning and Zoning Meeting. The proposed new legal description will be lots 1 through 20 of Block 1, lots 1 through 20 of Block 2, and dedicated public right-of-way bull-run subdivision. Character of the land is relatively flat, except towards the north where it slopes downward after the electrical right-of-way/eeasement. Power line easements will be in the rear yards of those lots to the north. Requests for comments were sent on December 30th, 2019 to the city administrators, city attorney, city engineer, Black Hills Electric Co-op, and Black Hills Energy, Pennington County Registered Deeds, Equalization, and Pennington GIS. All requested changes have been made. Proposed land use does not conflict with the intent or goals of Hill City's comprehensive plan. This proposed land use supports a key goal of the comprehensive plan in regards to affordable housing. The proposed final plat does meet the standards as set forth in Title IX in relation to the PUV conditions. You have a copy of the PUV conditions with the plat. There's no flood hazard area on this property. A reminder to the applicant that the city of Hill City is not accepting ownership of Quinn Road Extension with this plat approval. The road needs to be completely built, approved by City Public Works Director, and a separate resolution by City Council accepting the road. This is per Hill City Municipal Code 1403.1678. P&amp;Z Commission has reviewed the final plat application, recommends their approval to City Council.
Okay, so gentlemen, Danny's open for questions. We also have Mr. James Skull here, who is the developer, who is also open for questions as well. So I'm going to go ahead and ask if there's anything that you'd like to address to either of them. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. If there's any members of the public that would like to come with comments or to address this action item, please come to the front and state your name.
Hi Kathy, Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
This is Dan McNamara, Hill City, South Dakota.
Okay.
I just want to personally thank Mr. Jim Skull for his commitment going forward and bringing the community, that's something I think we do need. That's all I really have to say.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. I believe the entire city echoes the comments of Mr. McNamara. This is something that's crucial for our city to allow us to continue to grow and be able to provide some very specific needs to our current and future community members. So thank you. If there's no other comment, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion Alderman Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Jarvis, roll call vote, please, Stacia. Jim Peterson.
Yes.
Phil Minor. John Johnson.
Yes.
Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
All in favor, motion approved. One step further, Mr. Skull, again, thank you very much for all your work that you're doing at the city.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
I'd like to say that, you know, I work with other communities and it's surprising to me how well the community worked together on this. You know, my hat's off to Brett. We, through this process, you know, we had water problems, we extended sewer, we had some road issues we wanted to deal with, looping the water line we wanted to deal with, and we fit it all in the process. And then a special thank you to Danny. You know, she was knowledgeable, she was prepared, she was prompt, interactions. I have to tell you, we didn't always see eye to eye in all the things, but that's okay. We always ended up talking it through and came up with a solution. She was very solution-oriented. You know, she went probably beyond the call of duty in some of these ordinances in the tiny homes and realizing that they didn't fit and she wanted to modify those and that sort of thing. We're still discussing the final HOA and what that should look like. Because I think we all have this picture of a beautiful little development up there for attainable lots, as we call them, as Bob called from back here, they're attainable lots. And they will, and surprisingly, I've got nice activity, you know? People that already say, you know, Rapid City, I work in Rapid, but I really would rather live in Hill City. And you ask them why and they say, well, you have a great school system. I can walk to the grocery store, I can walk to the hardware store, I can walk downtown. And you start thinking about that, how many communities in America, even small towns in South Dakota, can you build a house that will continue to appraise and have those amenities that you can do that? Good things just keep coming forth, I hear about them. So I'm really happy to be part of it. It's just going to make a really nice difference and I think it will sell out probably more quickly, we'll be looking for another chunk of land. That's okay, we'll do that one, too.
I don't think that would be a problem we'd mind, Mr. Skull.
So thank you very much, thank you to Danny. You were, you were much better than I ever dreamed, I tell you. Because it's kind of, you know, what we walked through and all this with the TIFF and the things we had to meet with the city and the city engineer, it wasn't easy. It was running some stumbling blocks and said, we have to solve this, it's a no-go. We have to solve that, it's a no-go. So we did, so it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for the feedback. Okay, moving on to action item 7D, meetings that get videotaped and put on YouTube. So this was submitted by Alderman Peterson. So Jim, if you want to go ahead and.
Well, yeah, this meeting is being videotaped. And we found out that the planning and zoning wasn't which we thought it was. And what meetings should or should not be videotaped, all of it is in the effort of transparency, which I'm all for. I guess I really think that P&amp;Z should be included in that and quite frankly, any of, like the bid or any of those could be, but, so, I've heard in the past that P&amp;Z said they didn't want to be included and that, so that led to the idea that there was some sort of choice. I just think the more transparency we can have, the better.
Yep, and I completely agree with you on the transparency effort. I'd like to go ahead and talk to our staff that actually does all of the work that's associated with this, so we could be enlightened on some of the processes and what it takes.
Sure. So, you know, we have one camera and we have one microphone, so this is the microphone, the camera's in the back there, very basic setup. I mean, this is, this is not anything elaborate by any means. Some other cities have their own audiovisual crew that can do it with different angles and whatnot. I don't know if you've ever been to the county commission meetings here in Pennington County, but they can do different camera angles and whatnot. And then I've just got a spare computer set up that runs it all. Once we record it, then I need to actually take that video offsite because our internet speed up here is not conducive to uploading it very efficiently. So I have to actually take it home and I upload it on my time. Once it's uploaded and it takes a while, you know, it can take anywhere from 15 minutes to an hour to upload. Once it gets uploaded, I need to review it because I want to make sure that it's gabble by gabble. So I start it during the pledge of allegiance and end it when the gabble hits, when the mayor ends the meeting. And then it processes and it does whatever it needs to do in order to get those updates done. So it's about a three-day process, really, because I leave it to do it something, come back. And I know a lot of that has to do with network speed and my availability and whatnot. So, anyway, if we add more meetings to it, we're going to be adding more of that process in. I agree with the transparency thing, I think this has been a great tool with YouTube, you know, and Alderman Peterson mentioned it, you know, the bid board, I think, you know, would be a candidate for that. You know, we also need to think about the library board as well. Those are all agendized meetings, official meetings of the city, where we post an agenda, the public needs to be made aware of those meetings. I think we need to make sure that if we're going to head down that path, that we have the right mechanisms and, you know, operational discussions to make sure that we do it successfully if we're going to expand it. So, that would be my only comment.
So if you're uploading it at night, presumably through the night, our system here can't handle that upload, even if it takes longer?
It could probably handle it. I didn't, I've never tried it because the upload time would probably be several hours. My gut. My gut feeling is that it would cut out, that it wouldn't consistently run for that amount of time.
What's your bandwidth over here from Central?
It's like seven...
Why don't you go to Golden West, you can get a hundred mags.
Yeah, so that's the other option, is upgrades, you know, to, to go to a faster bandwidth. You know, we would just need to make that happen to upgrade City Hall. So that would take care of one facet of it, so.
Then what we would also need to do is make sure that we did training and education to other staff, as Brett isn't always at every meeting, so there's other people that are actually, that actually have the accountability to run the meetings. So we would have a, a little bit of a learning curve there with people who also understood how to do the process and could do it as well. Now, with that being said, again, I agree that I think transparency is a wonderful thing. I have gotten a lot of positive input on these meetings. So that being said, if the council does wanna move forward with additional things that are recorded in the same fashion that we do the council meetings, I would recommend that you allow the staff time to go back and understand what we could do. And John, you had mentioned going to Golden West, that was an option that we already talked about. So we could figure out costs and what would be involved and things like that in order to make that happen. So, I don't know if I necessarily need a motion, but...
That is an action item. I think I'll make a motion to move forward with getting P and Z on the video. And with that being said, look at upgrading the speed. I think you're gonna find it's probably gonna be a push on costs, and yet you get better. So I would say get that going and then roll that down for the next three months, and then look at the next possibility, which might be a bid board meeting, which have their meetings here. Library meeting, I don't believe they have their meetings here, so we don't, I don't know how realistic that is to give us...
They don't even have internet on, no.
So, do they not have any other meetings here?
You know, that would be another option because the equipment is home here.
Sure.
So, it would make the process easier. So, I would ask that...
So do a step into it kinda thing and, and step into P and Z next. And if that means getting better bandwidth, I think if, did you say seven? So, I would, I would... I think we're, I think we're due for an upgrade in speed to probably create some efficiencies in other areas as well.
So, can a motion from the council include whatever it would be necessary in order to...
I'll restate my motion.
Well, before you do though, Jim, let me just find out if it's okay, so we don't have to keep coming back for approval on costs and things like that? Would that be okay, or do we really actually need to know costs and bits and pieces?
I, I think, I think the costs that we're talking about, from what I'm hearing from the discussion, is something that we could administratively approve.
Okay.
So I don't think we would need any specific...
Okay.
...financial authorization.
Perfect.
I mean, we're not talking more than three thousand dollars kind of work to be done.
Which is what our, which is what Stacia's authorities, okay.
More than like two thousand?
Well, I'm just, I'm just throwing out the number. Our, our spending authorities, you know, Stacia has the ability to spend up to three thousand dollars.
Gotcha.
And so, I, I don't foresee that being exceeded.
I just wanna make sure I heard you right.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm not saying it will cost. I'm saying... We can work within that dollar amount to make it work.
Okay, I'm sorry.
With cable franchise, years ago, the Cable Fighter would furnish the city services, remember? And then it, actually, it was set up so we had a local channel.
Yep, and that changed the last time we redid the, the franchise agreement, where the internet was taken completely out because the feds changed the rules on how the internet works with those franchise agreements. And so that was, that's off the table. So, like the, like this TV, what they are supposed to provide to us is we get free basic cable up here so we can check the weather channel and whatnot. But beyond that, we don't get any free internet at any location. But we still, we have access to that, that public access channel, which we've not taken advantage of yet, but it's out there, so.
We don't even get sales tax now.
Correct.
Okay, so, sorry Alderman Peterson.
Well, then my motion is just to move forward with getting that set up for P and Z and then look at, you know, look at this again in three months and look at if there's other meetings that, you know, can effectively be done.
Okay, so we have a motion, Alderman Peterson, is there a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Jarvis, roll call please, Stacia? John Johnson?
Yes.
Phil Minor?
Yes.
Jim Peterson?
Yes.
Steve Jarvis?
Yes.
And just, there, there is a delay on the phone, so... We're getting more cognizant of the fact that we'll wait for responses from the phone, so, thank you everyone. All right, all in favor, motion carried. All right, the next action item we have, approval of maintenance worker one. So this is an action item that would, you typically wouldn't see in our agenda. It would typically follow a conversation that occurred, an executive session conversation. In the spirit of transparency and in, in understanding that this is an entry-level position, we do now have a current public works director who is in a position to be accountable for those decisions that they, that they make. Discussion of his process would be a good thing for everyone to hear, and that's why we have put it as an agenda item, so the public can understand. We do wanna make sure that we provide the necessary transparency so folks understand how we're making decisions here in City Hall. I've heard consistently, time over time, well, it's that popular person, or it's somebody's pet, or that favorite person. That's not how we're doing business going forward. There is a thoughtful process that we use to do this, and I wanted to have Travis work the council through how he handled this situation and his decision. So I'm gonna go ahead and invite Travis to come up and address the council.
I would like to say something, Mayor.
Okay.
I don't mind listening to Travis and how he, how his process is, but I, I don't feel comfortable approving the maintenance worker tonight. I would like to see it in an executive session.
Okay, so you were provided with the...
Again, I don't feel comfortable doing it in public. I want, I would like to have it in an executive session. I don't mind listening to Travis, how he come about his process.
Okay.
But whenever it comes to discussing personnel, any, any personnel, city person, present personnel or future, I think it should be done in executive session.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
Okay, so then I'll look to the rest of the council for their opinion on how to handle this. We do have Travis here, so Travis can explain the process that he used. If there is a desire to have additional conversations in an executive session, then that will have to be done at the next council meeting, which means that that will then delay the hiring of a maintenance worker in that position until our next meeting. So...
I agree with Steve.
Okay.
What's that? I said I agree with Steve.
Any other conversation from the other council?
I don't have anything at the moment.
Okay. Alderman, Alderman Minor?
If we're going to discuss personnel, I think our longstanding policy has been to do that in executive session.
Okay.
That's how we've done past hires. So I guess I'm, I'm tending to go that way unless I hear some compelling reason to change the process.
Okay, so, with that being said, we do have Travis here. Is there interest in hearing from Travis what process he used and interaction he had and how he came to his decision?
Well, he's easy here, I guess.
I don't mind hearing this process. I, I don't want to hear any, any information about the personnel.
People-specific, that's correct, and that's, this is not intended to be that. This isn't just intended to help everyone understand how we look at resumes and how hires are decided. So Travis, you wanna go ahead and talk through the process that you used?
Sure, um, well, Madam Mayor, Ms. Stacia, and I had the opportunity to interview two applicants last week. Both of them was in same setting, same, basic same questions asked, pretty much all I was hired. I had the opportunity to take them down and show them the shop, meet all the guys that work for Public Works, including wastewater. They gotta interact with them a little bit, talk to them and stuff. I had a chance to talk to the guys after they talked to them, and they kinda all came to a, you know, conclusion on who they felt would fit well and based on their applications and experiences, I guess. So, that's how we came up with our decision, my decision, on who we should move forward with in the hiring process.
Okay, so thank you for that. So, the council not being in a position to make any comment regarding this, we will not be able to move forward any further until we have the opportunity to have an executive session. We will have an executive session at the next council meeting. We will have the executive session at the beginning of the meeting after we call the order for the pledge to allegiance. I'd like to make sure that we are timely in doing that, and then we're able to ensure that this can be voted on so we can get people move through the process. Any other questions or comments? So I will need a, a motion from the floor to table the approval of maintenance worker one.
I'll make the motion to table the approval of maintenance worker one.
So we have a motion from Alderman Jarvis, is there a second?
Second. Are you gonna put it, say now about going to D S?
Yeah, well, we need to put it next week or our next meeting in executive session.
Yep, and as I had stated, we'll move it up to the front.
And you're gonna move the executive session up to the front?
Yep.
And for what purpose?
So we can get it done at the beginning of the meeting. It can be put anywhere, and that is my choice, so we can get that taken care of timely.
So I was just wondering what purpose? I mean, we, we'd still get it done at the meeting, right?
Yeah, at the meeting.
Right, that's the purpose, but I would like...
I mean, if it became a long, drawn-out discussion, perhaps, I have no idea. But then we're making these people come back in and wait. But if they, you know, I, I'm just wondering what the purpose is.
Okay, so the purpose is to make sure that we can move that part along and get that approval done so we can let Travis get back to whatever he has. Today we happen to have a snowboard.
I have no idea how long the discussion would take.
And I don't, I don't see any difference. I mean, if we have it at the last, at least everyone that they want to leave, they can.
I don't care, I'm thinking more of the...
So at this point, there has been information shared that there will be an executive session. The placement of that, if any of you would like to speak with me directly, I'd be more than happy to talk to you. But the bottom line is, we will have an executive session on personnel to cover the hire recommendation from Travis.
Well, you're gonna hang him right after executive session?
You can start the process.
Imagine if some, if a motion would come out of executive session, you can't, you know, and make a motion to something like a normal process. I don't understand, I'm confused.
I'm, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's fine.
I mean, all we're doing is hanging these folks up.
People stand outside.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, yeah, maybe it's a two-minute deal, maybe it's a twenty-minute deal, I, maybe it's a two-hour deal, I don't know.
So, we have the motion, and Mr. Jarvis, could you go ahead and if you wanna restate it with the executive session portion in there?
Uh, I'll make a motion to table the approval of maintenance worker one until our next scheduled meeting, which looks like it's on Monday, March the fifth, for discussion to be made in an executive session.
It's March ninth.
March ninth?
Yes, isn't it? Yeah, March ninth. Yep.
So this is a typo?
Our next scheduled meeting is March ninth, yep.
Second.
There's a motion, Alderman Jarvis, second Alderman Johnson, all those in, Stacia, please do roll call. Okay. Jim Peterson?
Yeah.
Phil Minor?
Yes.
John Johnson?
Yes.
Steve Jarvis?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to action item seven F, approval of Bobcat repairs.
So, I don't know if Travis, yeah, Travis is still here. So, we had the attachment, the main attachment part of the Bobcat break on us. It's the front part of it, wherever all the attachments been on, and so it's secure. Well, it's part of it, I call it the tooth or whatever, but the tooth is busted off. We don't have the ability to fix it on our own. So, with it the way it is right now, that whole front end of that Bobcat wobbles around, it's just not stable. So it's moving around, it's not really, it's doing more harm than good to the Bobcat. So we took it into Gener Equipment to get a price quote, and you'll see that as one of the price quotes that's in there. And I think it was like, let me look at that.
For just that attachment, that's thirty-five hundred?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I was gonna say thirty-four hundred, but thirty-five sixty-nine. So while it was there, I knew Travis had him do a once-over of it, since we already have it in Rapid. We've been having some leaks that we've been fixing on and off with the hydraulics. They looked at some other items on there, and so we came up with this laundry list of things that should be repaired. If we start, kinda start with that section of Bobcat things. One is that safety hydraulic bypass is broken, that should be repaired for four hundred and sixteen dollars. The next page is the basic functions, like the wiper, washer, door shop need to be replaced. More important operational thing is the next one, it's the chain case level axle seals are leaking. That one's what, three hundred and eighty-one dollars? And then the big one is the, the attachment part of it that needs to be done. And it's thirty-five sixty-nine.
And the reason that one so much, I was up there this morning to talk to them. They actually have to, where this, this Bobcat attaches to the unit, they actually have to cut it off, re-weld it because of the, the, where the pins slide in, it won't hold the pins right anymore. So they actually have to cut it off, weld the piece on there that attaches to this Bobcat. So, I mean, it's way more involved than something we would be able to take on. That's why that line item is so much.
So, these dollar amounts exceed our, our operational spending authority, and so we're bringing them to you. The Bobcat, like I said, is headed down in Rapid City right now.
How'd we get it down there?
They came and dropped off a loaner for us and then picked it up and trailered it into Rapid.
That's the trucking expense on there, unfortunately.
That last page in there for the three hundred dollar fee is to get it into Rapid. So, you know, we, we use this Bobcat, I know, pretty much on a daily basis. This Bobcat, I think, Stacia, did you say it's an oh four?
Oh five.
Oh five. You know, so it's, it's definitely got some time in of service with the city. But it's something that we use for snow removal, we use it in the summertime for gravel, dirt, whatnot. I mean, it's used quite a bit. And it's one of those things, the way it is right now, the front end of it won't hold an attachment correctly. That is like the main thing that it does. The other ones are safety issues or concerns, that we just need to get those fixed.
So, just out of curiosity, do we, do we have a trailer to haul that in and out of Rapid? Do we as a city have a trailer? I know they brought one out, and they took it back, and they're charging us three hundred bucks. Probably not a big deal, I'm just curious if we have our own trailer to mobilize something like this.
We do have a car trailer, I'm not sure what the weight limit is for the car trailer. If it would handle this or not, I guess that's not something...
And it's fifty-two seventy-eight, is that a lot of hours on an oh five?
When I talked to them this morning, they, they pretty much said that it is for that year and stuff like that, that's...
It's a lot of hours.
It's a lot of hours, you know, they, when I was talking to the sales rep today, he said it kinda missed the point of getting a good return on a trade-in type thing on one because of the amount of hours in the year and stuff like that, so.
So what kind of money have we put into this thing in the last five years?
You know, we pulled, we pulled bills, what, just for the past year or two? I can't remember, Stacia.
Just last year.
Just last year. And I don't remember what the dollar amount was.
It must not have been super significant if you don't remember.
Fifteen hundred, thousand, somewhere in there, twelve hundred.
I think just in three invoices, we looked at was over two grand, but it was at a different time.
Right.
It wasn't a lot.
The last one might have been in eighteen, though, in nineteen, I don't think.
But if we, if we looked at replacing it with a used one, it's gonna be several thousand, isn't it?
Tens of thousands, probably.
Well, this one, just the value of the one we have that we looked up is worth about fifteen for the one we currently have. If we were to buy our, with the same amount of hours we have. Brand-new, we're looking at fifty, fifty-five, so.
Or good used, we're looking at thirty thousand, something like that.
Right. Right, if you find the right deal. I'm hoping that it holds together, whatnot, these things are, well, pretty beat up or used a lot, so.
And they've looked the whole thing over and this is their repair list?
Yes, this is what we feel is, uh, needs to be taken care of right away. I wouldn't say it's a hundred percent fixed after this, but this is what we feel is, we need to be able to run it safely and keep it going. It's not the end of the repairs for the machine, no.
Mayor, Mayor Skorzuski?
Yes.
Um, yeah, the unit is fifteen years old, it's a two thousand and five. And, so, the city's gotten a lot of use out of it. So, to, to look at a new unit, when we had last year's budget hearing, I believe the proposal was somewhere between sixty and eighty thousand, depending on if we went to the next bigger size unit and what attachments we got for it and buckets, as I remember, uh, the Public Works Director that talking about. And, we did not vote to, um, put, uh, money towards a new unit because we thought this one was still in, you know, fairly good shape right now. Plus, we had a, a spare one, so to speak, sitting at the wastewater plant. Um, so, we did not put any money in the twenty-twenty budget for any equipment for Public Works. So, I guess in my feeling, you know, three thousand dollars to keep it running for however long i- is probably the most cost-effective solution right now, unless, uh, like Alderman Jarvis suggests, that Jenner notifies us, they got a, a good used unit in, maybe, you know, five hundred hours or less, something, you know, less than, you know, three to five years old, where we could comfortably buy it for, you know, in the thirty thousand dollar range. Um, spending the, the thirty-five hundred now is, is probably our best option, is, is what I feel.
Bill, the number is a little over five thousand.
Yeah, for, for everything.
Oh, it's not the thirty-
No, I thought, it's not a subtotal.
Yeah, that's just the subtotal for that one page.
Oh.
So, but I think your, your thought process is probably right on, I mean, I don't, I think we should just probably get it fixed and then keep our eye open and know that we got an aging piece of equipment that's used heavily.
And then, perhaps when twenty-twenty-one budget comes around, we can make specific discussion about any, about allowances for that. As we know, it's an aged piece of equipment.
Travis can keep his eye open for, you know-
I mean, the last time I know a decent used one came around, it went for thirty-four and it went like that, so.
I spoke with him already, dug up at Jenner, um, to put some new quotes together for us and keep his eye open for use, but that, just, that he knew that it probably wasn't gonna happen, like, in the near future, it'd be maybe twenty-twenty-one that-
What about that second one we have that's sitting at the plant?
Um, I think if we did move forward with getting a new unit, that would probably be surplus to go with that, a trade-in, um, because that one doesn't run all the attachments that we have, it doesn't have the controls for them all, so we can't even use all attachments on that. So, my suggestion would be to keep the one we're gonna repair as essentially the backup or whatever, like the other one. Getting rid of the older one for a new unit.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So, move, second.
Motion, Alderman Johnson, second Alderman Jarvis, roll call please, Stacia.
Steve Jarvis?
Yes.
John Johnson? Bill Miner?
Yes.
Jim Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, uh, that closes out our action items, moving into discussion items. Discussion item eight, A, Boys and Girls Club report. Robin Platson, the R D Director. And I just wanted to welcome everyone that's here in support of the Boys and Girls Club today. Um, we've been working on something, our annual fundraiser's coming up, and I know Stacia mentioned it, um, a couple of weeks ago. And I do have your fir-, your official corporate invite, I'll give it to Stacia. But I also wanna make sure that everyone in the community is invited, just to contact me. I've got some small invites for you to have. And, that's our big invite, it's March twenty-eighth, up at Mount Rushmore, at five-thirty. And, it's, uh, I would say you're invited to a monumental experience. It's our eighteenth annual. I went back and checked to make sure I had the, the year on it and everything running. So, it's up at Mount Rushmore, we, um, we have our title sponsor, we're slowly getting in corporate table sponsors. We've already got some people that can't wait for the tickets to be done, so they're out there. And we've already started collecting our donations from our donors that have projects or things that they've been working on that they're gonna donate to help raise money, to keep us in funds and keep us open. The other thing that I've been working on with each of the unit directors from all three clubs is working on grants. So, that's what I've been, we've been doing the last couple of weeks, 'cause our first set of quarterly grants comes due on the twenty-eighth of this month, and then we've got several in March that are separate, ongoing. And it's grants. And, like the allocations we get from the public, you know, from the cities of each of the towns that we are located in, two of the counties that we're located in, all of those budgets have been, you know, have been cut or decreased dramatically. So, so we have to go after those grants to keep our doors open.
And I'm just here, bracka proct, um, or Ronnie, sorry. Um, uh, I'm just here because, uh, I'm the unit director here in Hill City, and I've been here a little over eight years. Um, I just take it for granted that you guys know about the club. So, what we do at the club is, we have an after-school program and we have an all-day program in the summer. And what it does is, it's a safe place for kids to go after school. Um, we average about fifty, sixty kids a day. Um, we are open from the time school gets out till six-thirty at night. Um, so, for the teens. Um, six o'clock for the younger kids. We do have a couple of parents that are here today, just, you know, just in case we needed our support. Um, what we do is, we do programs, so the kids aren't, it's not just a babysitting program where the kids come and run wild and whatever. We do, um, homework help, we do crafts, we do, um, STEM activities, um, science projects, we do, um-
Nutritional-
Gym gains.
Nutritional kitchen projects.
Yeah. So, it's, it is an organized, um, group of programs, the kids come and then they do all day, um, in the summer as well. We do focus a lot on, um, uh, school, school retention, so, no summer learning loss. Um, so, we do a lot of reading, we do a lot of math, we do a lot of science, um, just so that they don't lose that time that they have gained in the, during the school year. So, it is an important part of our community, I mean, the club has been here since nineteen seventy-four. We do also have a preschool program, I myself attended the preschool program there. So, it is a stable part and a part of the community that many, many people actually rely on. And, and it is something that has been an, an asset, um, for people coming into the community. I've heard from parents saying, well, we picked Hill City because there is an affordable after-school program. There is an affordable summer place. We have people that come up from Custer, drop their kids off at our program and go back to Custer because they don't have an affordable program. So, I just really wanted you to know the impact and, um, really, how wonderful and how, um, great it is that we have a program here in a community this size for people that don't have a place to, to have their kids or a money to have, to hire somebody every day for them to be watched after school or be watched all day in the summer. So, I just want you to know that it really is a good asset for this community.
You have any questions?
I don't think there's time for that though.
Questions?
Hang on. Still got peanut butter and jelly sandwiches?
If you come down, I'll make you one.
Well, that's two offers, Lisa said that too.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
I'll do that.
Okay, uh, action item eight, B, water tower funding source and what was the plan for payment? So, uh, Mr. Peterson, I believe you asked that this be added as a discussion item. Brett should be prepared for any questions that you have.
What was the plan? And what was the funding source and how were we planning on paying for it?
Sure. Uh, so, over the, the past several budget, um, processes that we go through, every July, August, whatever, um, if you, if you remember or go through that paperwork, um, we've always put in a, a dollar amount for principal payment and interest payment on a loan through rural development. And so, that's added up to about fifty-three thousand dollars between the, between the principal payment and the interest. Um, that's been in there to pay for this water reservoir. Obviously, it's not built and we are not paying anything on it, but it's been on our budget for the past couple of years, few years. So, it's already built in.
It's budgeted for and it's rural development, do we have to use rural development for that loan? To pay for it?
So, what happens is, is we applied through rural development several years ago to get on their low-interest system. Um, so, the loan that we were approved for is, uh, one point one, it's like one million, one hundred and twenty thousand. It's a forty-year loan at three percent. So, that's what we've been working on, um, for this reservoir system.
Is that still?
We don't, we don't have to go through rural development in order, it was, it's a program that was available to us. Uh, we don't have to use them, I mean, we can, we can either pay for it ourselves or find another mechanism to pay for projects. I mean, we're not required to go through rural development, it was just a program available.
So, it's, last time it was stated, it was three percent at thirty years, but it's three percent at forty?
It's three percent at forty years, yep.
And that is current, those are good current numbers, I mean, as far as, okay.
Yeah.
And it was one point what?
Yeah, the, the original dollar amount of the project was one million, one hundred and twenty thousand.
And when was that?
Uh, that's on the original, um, that's on the original, um, loan document information from, well, it's like from five years ago. Um, but we've adjusted that, uh, number, I think we're still in the same ballpark. Uh, but that's like their cap, I think that's their cap number. The, the realistic number that we're looking at was more like nine hundred and thirty-one or sixty-one, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand. So, um, I do know that, um, those rates, um, since that time, and they have dropped, and they're probably more like in the two-point-four percent range, two-point-three and a half, whatever. Um, so, there may be an opportunity to, to, to get those rates, the lower rates as well with rural development, so. I, and in fact, I was just on the phone, I'll get to my report item. Um, I was just on the phone with rural development today, so.
So, when do we anticipate triggering that?
Well, so, what's, what's been set up already is, so, the loan is through rural development, but during construction, we actually have a lo-, an interim construction loan through Cobank out of Colorado. And Steve's shaking his head, he remembers that. So, what they like to do is, for all of the, um, construction in progress payments, we actually will be working with this bank out of Colorado, and they've done several of them in the state. Um, where we submit those bills to Cobank, they pay all the bills, they keep track of the money that's being expensed, and then the construction gets going. Uh, once that construction is final, everything's been accepted, then there's a final dollar amount. And that final a dollar amount is then funded from rural development to Cobank to pay off that dollar amount. Then that, whatever that dollar amount ends up being, that's the loan that we have with the rural development. So, they buy out the loan essentially.
And then, they're charging a rate of probably a higher rate of some sort for that short term?
Um, yeah, and I don't have, I don't have that information with me right now for the interim construction loan, yeah, there's a different rate, yep.
And construction timeline was six months, four months?
You know, the, the thought is, and I was just having that conversation again with Kale today, our thought has been that if they throw the right resources at it, this should be able to be built within four months. Um, so, six months, definitely.
This year.
Um, yeah, ideally, yeah. I, I'll, I'll break ground whenever I get the green light, I mean, um, you know, it's, we, we have all the, we have all the drawings, we've had all the conversations. Um, again, it's, it's really in the hands of, um, rural development releasing the project. Uh, you know, we're dealing with our local government who's getting the money from the feds and the approval, so there's a few layers there at work. Um, so, it's just, you know, communication with them, so.
Thank you.
Mayor Skorzuski?
Yes.
A question for Brett, please?
Yes, go ahead.
So, the money that Brett said we were putting in the budget, does that come from the water infrastructure fund?
So, that goes, what we did is, we, we listed that loan, the principal and the interest and the operational. Uh, it's part of our operational budget because it will become an operational expense once the, um, project is complete and the loan is active, so it's an operational expense. Um, if you, if you want to, you could, you know, 'cause we have, um, that fund, that water improvement fund, uh, and I forget what dollar amount is in there right now, but es- essentially, depending on what money is in there, you could pay that note off quicker, um, based upon whatever money you have in that fund. Uh, the payments would still be the same for the rural development loan, but you would just pay it off a lot sooner, if that makes sense.
So, we're not required to take it out of a specific fund? It can come from either water operational budget or water, the infrastructure budget?
So, the, the way that we've put it into the budget, and again, you guys are the final deciders, but the way that we've put it into the budget for the past several years is that it's an operational expense that we expect to have on a regular basis. So, we've taken it out of the operational costs. Um, but like I said, we've built up that improvement fund over the years with that special improvement fee that was started in two thousand and nine. Uh, if there's adequate funds in there and you so choose to use those funds to, to take care of the principal of this loan and pay a sizable chunk off, uh, or, or, or just go with the operational costs or whatever and, and use that money for some other project, that would be up to the council to do, but you, you could sure do that.
So, but there's no specific law which way we have to go, that's a council decision?
Correct, yep. Yeah, the o-, the only restriction is, is that this is an enterprise fund, and so, the money, uh, that's spent on the water reservoir system a- and within the enterprise fund itself has to be spent on water projects. We can't use it to, um, you know, work on our parks or our streets or the sewer fund. It's gotta stay within, uh, the water project.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thanks, Alderman Miner, anybody else? Okay, no further discussion on that, we can go ahead and close that out and move into action item eight C, priority list for funding projects. And again, this was from Alderman Peterson, so, uh, Jim, if you wanna go ahead and lead us?
Sure. So, sometime back, we talked about priorities, I, I had shared with you some bonding ideas uh, to attain money to do some projects. Um, and it was important to hear this discussion right now because when we look at those numbers, that, well- when we look at those numbers, that, well, I'll get to that later, uh, the, you sent out a list, uh, about different projects and we started to prioritize them, or or we, no, I'll take that back. We haven't started to pri- prioritize them, but we, in my opinion, should. And so there's, on this list is streetscape sidewalk project, well, that's going, major lake bridge replacement, water reservoir, public restrooms, switch for the backup generator. Didn't we take care of that? Is that done?
No.
That one's not done yet? Oh, what was done to those? That was, is this the setup for those? For the wells? Anyway, doesn't matter. New wellhouse, high and low sides, dig new wells, create water system loops, playground equipment memorial, playground equipment tracey, remove and improve BMX track, mu- mu- museum dry bridge repairs, conduct parking study, park and recreation plan, eliminate sewer lagoon cells, pedestrian bridge replace, pedestrian bridge replace memorial and tracey, trace, uh, trash can replacement, geese control, waste water treatment plant expansion, street paving, water treatment plant, box culverts, Newton Bishop, street lighting plan, city swimming pool. And one that wasn't on here was the infiltration problem that we have. And so you, you know, so my thought is, okay, well, I did my own priority, uh, for of this, and I've got five priorities uh, from my perspective, and it is a point of starting a conversation. Uh, but the point was is that when I looked at this bond, their interest rates are at like two percent. And the city has, you know, ninety, uh, last year, ninety-eight million dollars of a- assessed value. So ten percent of that can be used for water. We can bond ten percent of that for water and sewer and five, an additional five percent for general projects and not to, that we should do that, but that's what our debt limit capability is. So I, you know, I'm sitting here looking at this and I'm going, okay, well, we have the water tower project that was maybe a million dollars several years ago. Hopefully, it still is, but whatever. You know, I put a number of one-point-four million at that, and if we're three percent over now forty years, that's interesting, you know, uh, uh, debt reduction and interest that we have to pay. But we could go literally bond for three million dollars, pay for that water tower, and it's just a concept. This isn't, numbers aren't necessarily meaningful in terms of just concept-wise. Have another one-point-five million dollars in likely, uh, currently, we have a bond that we've been, that we did for the road paving that we're paying two-hundred thousand dollars a year for debt and principal and interest payment that we're used to paying. Comes out of the real estate taxes and we're used to paying that. And we have these projects. One, my first one is water infiltration. You know, we're sitting here processing, I just talked to Jim, forty to fifty thousand a day into the plant that's probably just rainwater infiltration. That's a lot of expense to the city. Um, so my top five were water infiltration, repair the sewer plant and maintenance of that, maybe a new well, throw some money at parks, and then throw money at roads. And if we did that, um, we could do interest-only payments for the next six years until the other bond pays. And that would be somewhere probably around thirty-two thousand extra a year, and we just budgeted for fifty-three extra a year. And then it would roll into that two-hundred thousand that's already being paid. You know, that we're already used to paying, taking, and we could get a lot of these things done and still be, you know, probably twenty, forty-five retiring that debt. So that's where I'm coming from. I don't know what those numbers are. The rural development might have dropped down into this two percent range, but this is two percent money. Uh, we have projects that we need to get done. We have wants. I don't know. I don't, I I don't think we should wait around, uh, and watch interest rates go up. And if we have, uh, a mechanism, uh, but at the end of the day, we have to sit and prioritize what we think needs to be done. And for me, water infiltration is number one because that's nothing but costing us money every year. And if we can spend, I put three-hundred thousand at it, forty thousand at the plant, sixty thousand for a well, seventy-five thousand at parks, and then a million at, uh, paving, roads, which could include paving, repair, maybe museum repair of the bridge. You know, I know it's not gonna fix everything, uh, but we go down the road a little bit and we actually get something done from that perspective. And the water tower at one-point-four, it comes in at a million, you know. We have another four-hundred thousand to go towards, I mean, in this concept. I'm just throwing out a, uh, you know, a number that's sustainable because we're already paying the two-hundred thousand a year right now that everybody in this community is contributing towards, towards those roads that were paved previously. So, uh, I think as a council, it would, we'd get on this right away in terms of finding out what priorities, I guess, if any, we think we need to get done.
How much did you save for the wastewater?
I threw, and then, you know, just round numbers. I threw, you know, 'cause I'm not guessing that things stayed the same, especially when we got, you know, a sidewalk project, that's, our share has increased dramatically. But one-point-four million at the water tower is the, just the number I threw at it. Hopefully, it comes in at nine-hundred thousand or nine-hundred and fifty or nine-eighty or whatever it might be. But I think we can do better than forty years of retiring debt, and I think we can do equally, if not better, on interest, and I think we can get a lot more stuff done. And it's not gonna impact us from a budget standpoint, 'cause we got two-hundred thousand already, a line item that we pay every year, and we have this other fifty-three that's sitting there that we don't use every year, so it just, you know, it's not like we're accumulating it. We just got it in our budget to take care of. And essentially, uh, for the next six years, our line item budget would be, you know, two-hundred and thirty, two-hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then after that other bond is paid for, it would go down, back down to two-hundred thousand. So I'm throwing that out there. Once, again, I think we need to get on this. We need to get on it before, I don't know, we're not gonna see interest rates like this forever.
Any discussion?
Would you suspect our debt limit?
So our debt limit is, um...
I know if we had an emergency or something, we need to...
So here's, here's where we stand right now. Our debt limit for the general debt limit is five percent. If we're at ninety-eight, we're probably a little more than that now. This is two thousand nineteen numbers. So five percent is four-point-nine million. We have a, I'm just gonna call it a one-point-five million dollar bond that's sitting out there right now. So that means we have three-point-four left to be able to, that's for general stuff. But for water and sewer, we have nine-point-eight million that we can bond for or borrow. And I'm just gonna throw the tiff at that, so that's one-point-two million of that number being used. So there's eight-point-six million left of that one. And some of it would be, you know, a little bit of each, I I would think, you know, and we should, you know, I don't, should we max out our debt limit capability? Absolutely not. We need to have that emergency, but we also know that we're carrying an emergency fund internally as well, and we've, I think, if I remember right, that's, and that's seven-fifty, you know, which won't go a long ways, but it's a, better than, um, you know, if we had a real disaster, so just, that's our capabilities right now. But we have some major, you know, that infiltration's costing us, you know, if if Bill is correct in his numbers, it's costing us eighty to a hundred thousand a year for treating rainwater, groundwater. We're not gonna get it all. There's no system out there that's great, you know, but there's obviously some big holes somewhere. So I think as a council, you know, take that leadership and and find out what, and, you know, a big number like this, maybe you take it to a vote. I don't know. Did we do a vote for the road? I can't remember. Uh, the two-point-six that we borrowed for paving the roads that we did, was that a vote by the, by the people?
Yeah, it was, that was done before my time, but I know there was a vote.
Remember, was it, was that a vote? I can't remember, yeah. So, you know, that would be, I'd be fine with that, but, you know, they they elect people to take care of things, so. And in the past, all I've heard is, you know, we don't wanna look for this 'cause it's gonna cost us money. Well, that's catching up to us.
So, uh, Mayor, this is Talbot.
Yes, Talbot?
Um, just as a clarification, uh, you have to go to a vote if you're gonna use general obligation bonds, and given the size of the project, essentially with like the water project, if you're using essentially the revenues from that enterprise fund, you don't need a vote. But if you're gonna use general obligation bonds, in other words, if you're gonna need, uh, potentially property tax or sales tax to support, you're likely going to require a vote of people to pass those bonds before you can borrow the money.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good.
Any other discussion? So, um, I I appreciate the thought that you've put into this, um, as far as a prioritization, and I, and I one-hundred percent agree with you. We need to start with prioritization. I think for any event, if we're gonna go out to look for funds, we're gonna have to identify those projects that would be associated with it. Um, infiltration is on the top of my list as well, and actually, it's infiltration and sewer as a whole. Um, a- and the reason for that is I know that we're increasing our population count with the new houses that are going in and with with any other development that's happening. Our, 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 um, community is gonna grow, and our population is gonna grow. I also know that historically, we've had issues with the amount of infiltration during the summer months. So, you know, we may find, as we start to investigate this infiltration issue, that one of the maze, one of the ways we may need to rectify that is actually the second side of our water wastewater treatment plant, which I believe has a huge price tag on it.
Yeah, that's...
But also to bring us into compliance when we know we're out of compliance. So, you know, I think we need to look at those things that we need to start having those conversations on and investigate and see what the the solutions or resolutions to those issues that we have are, and then that will help us identify the funds that we need in order to rectify that.
So I totally agree. I think we're, you know, if we're processing forty or fifty thousand extra water, we need to look for those holes and get the major ones. You're not gonna get them all. You're gonna get the major ones to have it fall into a reasonable tolerance level. Um, the other, and so, but that other adding to the plant to process, you know, it's, it systematically needs to be done, looked at, and, um, you know, I I wouldn't wanna spend six, seven million just to make sure that we can handle the water infiltration plus the regular sewage, you know. We we should look at the source of that, but the other thing in here, somebody had put on here, the removal of the, of the, uh, sewer lagoons, and I I just, I find that odd. I don't understand why we would do that. That gives us a backup, a redundancy, a a time delay, you know, so I'm not sure why we would do that. There used to be three, I don't know if there's still three. One I know was, uh, one we couldn't use, but the other two effectively were what we use for Hill City in the past, correct?
Yeah, there's, there's, um, there's three lagoons that were there previously. They're still there today. Uh, when we get into trouble, um, you know, i- ideally, we're just using our emergency pond that was created with the construction of the of the wastewater treatment facility, but we've had a need to discharge into the first cell um, because of, you know, increased groundwater infiltration. And so, yeah, I mean, a- all of that needs to be looked at altogether. You know, is there an opportunity to get rid of those lagoons? I think the answer is yes. Um, do those lagoons need some assistance and to be looked at themselves? Yes. It's, it's a holistic conversation, um, of whether they're, uh, removed or just, uh, kind of refreshed, so to speak. Just the master plan of it.
Yeah, so anyway, you know, I'm, let's start working, make a, make a list. Let's knock them off, you know?
Okay. So for clarification, the list that's in your, the list that's in the packet was created back in two thousand and nineteen, and the project prioritization tool legend or the numbering that's on it, that was put together at that same time. This list was not meant to, meant to be something holistic. This was sent to all of the council as a way to help prioritize. I would expect that there could be things that aren't on this list. This was a compilation of a bunch of lists that were put together and the information that was taken off of those. The ones that were put at the top were the ones that were already in process, so from a scoring perspective, regardless of where they fell, they already have action items. Okay, but this was really meant as a, as a tool to start conversations on prioritization and what the council felt is prioritization. So I would not be surprised if there aren't items that you're not seeing on here that that are a priority um, to, to what the council has. And again, this was originally intended in two thousand and nineteen to be that conversation starter to get us going on prioritization. We did not pick up any steam from that. Um, it, it really kind of wasn't revisited, so now is the best time as any um, to make sure that we have a path forward with this part of the conversation and just don't continually see to have it up on the, on the discussion board as a conversation. I could offer a potential way that this could be handled if that's the way the council wants to do it. Take this information back, look at what's on there. Is it inclusive? Is it not inclusive? Jim's already gone through the process of taking a look at priority from his perspective. I would recommend that everybody comes up with a priority from their perspective. What do you think the important things are? And then at a future council meeting, we can have conversations on what is that overall priority? So what does everybody agree are the priority items? Start with that, and then we can start attacking what needs to be done to understand how does this need to be addressed and what are the funds that would be associated with it. So that's a potential way that this could be handled moving forward. I'm putting it out on the table um, for you guys to think about.
That's good. So at the next meeting, let's bring everybody's priorities and then condense them and say, hey, what can we agree on? And then by the next meeting, we can have a discussion and then, you know, invite the public and everything else, you know, to weigh in.
Exactly. The other thing that I, that I wanted to mention too is I know that you put roads on your list, and roads is something that I had addressed previously. Um, we have a lot of situations relative to roads in Hill City. It's not those that are just not paved, but it's those that are in poor condition, just repaired. Uh, we even have some streets in Hill City like Robinson Drive that aren't owned by the city that are something that we really need to take a look at. Um, so with that being said, my recommendation on the best path forward for that was to have, um, our architect do an accounting of the roads. What are we looking at? What do the surfaces look like? So it would help in the priori- prioritization of what needs to be done with regard to roads. Um, I've asked Brett to work with Cale and try to give us some idea of what that effort would look like as far as time and then any associated cost. So hopefully, I'll be able to bring that back to the council so you can see what it would take to start the research to look at that specifically. 'Cause that should be a part of it as well.
Did you have a cost on that second module at the disposal plan?
No. I, all we were talking about is what the first one cost, and it was, what, four and a half, four-point-five or five million?
Yeah, but that's the whole plan.
That was the whole plan.
There's a whole plan, so I don't know what the second leg would be. But, and then, you know, once we have this priority, then we can have the conversations. I know I spoke with Travis and talked a little bit about the expectations for his first six month, first six months. Let him have an opportunity to see what's going on and then tell me what was important to him, and that was the number one thing underwater was infiltration. So I know that he's working with Jim to try to understand what can be done, what needs to be done, all things like that. In addition to the fact that we need to understand how we provide coverage for that from a personnel perspective, so. What you're saying isn't necessarily, um, surprising or new for some of the staff that is sitting here engaged in it, but it helps, but it helps to have that as a, as a priority item, so they know they're working on the right things. If you, if the council is comfortable, I'm gonna go ahead and open it to the public right now. Um, so I'll open it to the public.
Mayor Skorzuski?
Yep, hang on. Um, yep, go ahead, Alderman Minor.
Um, a couple of comments. I didn't get them in quick enough, I guess, earlier when Alderman Peterson was talking. The wastewater, uh, treatment plant, um, transfer switch. We investigated that because we talked about putting that in the two thousand and twenty budget.
We investigated that because we talked about putting that in the 2020 budget. Um, when we looked into it further, it wasn't feasible or possible in the preliminary estimation to upgrade that system that we currently have. So, that's why it was taken out of our 2020 funding or budget discussions.
Yep.
The, the numbers I calculated for 2017 and 2018 on the cost to pre-infiltration, I looked at the total gallons that went through the plant, and I subtracted out the gallons of water that were billed through our system because we also have water leaks, so I didn't go with the gallons pumped. And then I looked at the actual cost to run the plant, not a year-to-year average, but the actual cost. So, in 2017, I calculated we treated about 25 million gallons of infiltration at a cost of $105,000. In 2018, the number came out to be about 33.7 million gallons at a total cost of $178,500. I haven't bothered staff to get 2019 numbers, but I suspect since we were in an overflow condition for six months over capacity since May through November
Yep.
that our costs for 2019 will, will exceed 2018 considerably.
Okay.
And so.
Thanks, Bill.
Everything Alderman Peterson said was correct about how much it's costing the city.
And, and Bill, you said that you had compared the gallons billed and not the gallons pumped?
Right, because we're losing anywhere from 25 to 33% of the water pumped versus the water billed because of leaks.
Okay, and that was taken into consideration in those infiltration numbers? So, I, I, yep, okay, so, yeah, where I was going to is, we know that there were 25 million gallons of infiltration, but how much of that is related to what we feel are known leaks? You, you see where I'm going? So, we could, we could get into further conversations about that and how we could get closer to truly understanding.
Are you talking about water and sewer, right? So, you got pumped from the well or whatever.
Right.
X amount. He's saying it's 25, 30% of what we bill. So, the meters show what goes through the houses, right?
Right.
So, that doesn't, that's not the sewer number.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I was following.
Right.
So, so.
Right, the sewer system, and so, we're actually losing money by pumping water that just leaks out of the system.
Right.
Right, so that's another problem.
Right, right.
That's a water distribution problem.
Right.
We're talking about a water, yep.
Right, the other, the other part of the problem, so, yeah.
Which should be, should be addressed as well, but it's.
But it's a movie, it's a movie.
Right.
So, it sounds like we've got lots of water.
Mm-hmm. And, so, I, I know we're getting a little bit off topic relative to the whole prioritization in itself, and that, I think, was really what you had intended this to be, not speaking for you. But, um, yeah, it, so it shows it's an important thing and it's something that we need to look at. So, if you, if you're agreeable with that proposed method that we can utilize, we can ensure that we have another discussion item. I don't think these need to be things that get voted on from a priority list. If they do, we can make it an action item.
For the next year, just everybody bring their priorities, what they see as priorities.
Yep.
And I say, bring your top six.
Yep, and I, and I like the idea, Alderman Peterson, that you put on the table about having our residents come and talk to us as well. I think it's important that we get input from them as well as we start to look through these and prioritize them. So, we'll make sure that that's part of that conversation as well.
As it should be, and especially if it has to have buy-in or any kind of vote.
Any kind of vote, absolutely. Okay. So, was there anything else that you wanted to cover in that conversation?
I don't think so.
Okay, so then, to set a reasonable expectation, it'll be that, and again, this is just a C-list. This isn't intended to be the overall list. So, if there's things that you don't see on here, make sure that you add it. And then we will start conversations and maybe a working session at our next meeting relative to the priority for projects in the city. Okay, before I move off, if it's okay, I'd like to recognize a resident.
Vic Alexander. Say, Bill, when did you very first start looking at that infiltration, when you and I talked about it, like 16 months ago or something, or? Do you remember about when that was?
Um, no, but the only numbers I've really run are 2017 and 2018. I did go back years previous, but I didn't run all the numbers because then I was making spacious, dig back through more records. So, I've got how many gallons were treated at the wastewater plant for all those years, but I nev, I didn't, didn't make a dig for all those other older records.
Sure, my only, my only point there was is that we can throw that in with the projects to prioritize it with all the other projects for another two years or three years or four years. But I'm telling you, like I said at the last meeting and meetings a year and a half ago, it is on fire now. It is on fire now. I don't know, is you need to prioritize that fire. We're losing eight, 10, $12,000 a month. I mean, that's a sizable portion just for the time we've been at this meeting. And it does, I don't think it's one of those things that we totally understand, that it is bleeding really bad. And we, now, we did fix some, to getting to the water side of it, we did fix some major leaks over the course of the past year, year and a half, and we have addressed some infiltration over, it needs to be studied like yesterday or like a year ago and not part of this priority system. I'm not saying it's not part of it, because the fix, the final fix, might take three years. But the point is that we need to start, somebody studying it and compiling what Bill kind of started to do with our current information and do it like today and tomorrow, not on a priority list that's going to come up in a while. And that's, thanks.
So, in answer to Mr. Alexander's question or statement, there is currently work and investigation that's being done to understand what we can do to identify the infiltration. So, it's not like it's just sitting there waiting for somebody to prioritize it. As I said before, our, our new city employee, Travis, understands the criticality of this and has already started to have conversations on what we need to do to address this. So, I don't want anybody to walk away with the, with the misunderstanding that it isn't being looked at like it's a, like it's a critical initiative. It is. It's just what it's going to take in order to, to make some fixes or whatever we need to do is going to have to come from authorization of the council, and it's, and it's going to bump up against other things that are there. So, thank you for your comments, and if there's nothing else on this topic, let's move on to the next one.
Yeah, some more people.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see her.
Well, Vic and I are on the same page.
So, your name for?
Connie Walters.
There you go. Thank you.
Yeah, and I've been reviewing this too, and it seems to me that instead of using the mixed meeting as, for priorities, I think we just need to do the water, the water and septic first, and then maybe make an outreach in a month for the committee, the council to come together and work on some of these other priorities, because I think you're right, it's on fire.
Okay.
And every time.
Each part of the water, wastewater.
I think any of it, the wastewater, the sewer, the, the whole concept, the whole mold there. Um, it's a very vital part of the community for everybody in the community.
Absolutely.
Churches, the schools, everything. So, I think maybe we should just address that first. I'm suggesting that we suggest that first, and then maybe in four weeks, each of the members, something other than the water, pick up what they think that might, you know, in their research. That gives them a little time to talk with Brett and, and facilities. But I think, yeah, we are on fire and it's hard to plan, plan and zone if you're concerned whether you're making decisions that we shouldn't be making if we don't have the facilities.
Exactly, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Walters. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to 8D, P and Z. Give them direction on how to approach initiatives going forward. So, Alderman Peterson, this came from you as well.
So, a few meetings ago, there was a statement made about directive or something, I forget what it was. But anyway, bottom line is, uh, P and Z is looking to bring initiatives forward, and it seems to me they should test the council's appetite for them. And maybe it would be go something like this, if, if they think that something's important to look at or whatever, have a couple of meetings, you know, get it put together, get their scope of what they think it is, and then come to the council, because, you know, what I'm hearing is, we had 19 meetings and you guys didn't do anything and you don't care, you know, just all kinds of stuff. And so, it might be more prudent to see if that recommending body would get a nod of, of, you know, hey, yeah, that makes sense, or, you know, sell it to the legislative body that actually ends up voting on it.
Okay.
So, that would be my take on initiatives for a P and Z to, to go after.
Okay, any, any other discussion at the council level?
I agree. I think it'd be best if they ran it through us first. No, what if they did waste a bunch of time on it and we put a thumbs down on it? I'm sure it'd make them crabby.
Well, let alone resources, attorneys and all that other stuff.
I mean, like the sign ordinance, I mean, it's gone through a lot, so.
Yeah, it's not that there wasn't some things in that sign ordinance, but there's other things that didn't, you know, whatever. But I think if they spent a couple, two, three meetings on developing a scope, that they could try to basically sell the idea to the legisla, you know, to the council, that might make more sense.
Okay, um, and I'd just like to confirm, I know that I was having some issues with my email. So, I just want to make sure that, it is a common practice that all of the agendas for all of the meetings, so planning and zoning, I'm not really sure about the bid, but they're all sent to the council. Do you guys, you, you guys do receive those?
I did those.
Okay, okay, so I wanted to make sure that you received those. All right, any other conversation at this level? I'm going to go ahead then and open it to the public to see if there's any additional discussion or comments from the audience. If you could come forward and tell us your name.
Yeah, it's a short comment. Bramland, Hill City. I just want to make sure that in the process of getting a tentative thumbs up, thumbs down on planning and zoning, that the public would be fully informed in that as the thing proceeds, that there would be still, it, it is unfortunate when you have 19 meetings and then some things voted down, but due to the schedule of planning and zoning, people are much more able to attend city council meetings, and I just want to make sure that the public gets a chance to, is in the loop.
Sure.
And that a pre-approval is not viewed the same as a final approval.
Okay, yep, thank you very much. Anything else?
Yeah, and hopefully they're on video so people can see them when they can't make the meeting.
Okay. Okay. Nothing further on that ta, topic. We'll go ahead and move into report items. So, common counsel, let's start with Alderman Minor. Simply because I'm expecting yours will be short, you just got back.
You would be wrong.
Oh, okay.
So, I just wanted to, to let residents know like you, oh, things are being done. Public Works is always looking for water leaks. They're always reviewing the gallons pumped. Water leaks are hard to find in Hill City. We, we've identified all the water services on whether they're high and low side. We're, we're trying to work towards being able to print reports so we can look at the water pumped and the water billed and correlate it back to help us pinpoint areas for leaks. Our wastewater superintendent, Evans, you know, uh, came to our meetings, what, two, three months ago, and talked about his ideas on, on infiltration. So, things are happening, maybe not as fast as we, we would all like, but it, it isn't forgotten. So, I just wanted to echo your sentiment.
Thank you.
Um, I did review, I did review last meeting, the February 10th meeting on YouTube, so I could get caught up from being gone. One thing I wanted to check about was Brett's report, excuse me, city administrator McManus' report on the bid project. If I'm understanding the timing correct, the current bid would call for the removal of the public restrooms in the alley as part of the paving project, and that the construction for the new senior center portion or the replacement restrooms wouldn't happen for an additional several months, maybe by the end of the year or something? Did I understand that correct?
So, if that's a question that you have, we'll ask Brett to address that in his report out, Bill. Um, we have changed, yeah, we have changed the format in the way that we do report outs, and it's simply meant as a time to give information. Um, if there's something that we need to address, we can put it on as a discussion item, but the intent is to continue the flow and get the meeting to run effectively. So, thank you, and I am.
Well, I'm not done.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Because if that, if that's the intent, I'm, I'm, my, my question is, has South Dakota codified law 932-5, which requires every first or second-class municipality with a population of 750 or more shall provide and maintain public toilets for each sex in an accessible location near the center of the business district. Such toilets shall be properly constructed under the supervision of the city board of health and shall be maintained in a clean and sanitary condition. So, there's a state law that says we're required to provide public toilets.
Yep.
And if we're tearing down before we're reconstructing, then we're in violation of state law. Just thought, I wanted that clarified.
Okay, and we'll make sure that that does get clarified. That's, that's a great point. Thank you. What else do you have?
That's it.
Okay. All right, Alderman Johnson?
Uh, last Monday was a library board meeting, standard business, and we, I mean, they had two sessions, there were continued education. We sat there and reviewed, which is kind of neat. And then Tuesday was supposed to be the ambulance meeting, but there was too many people sick, so it didn't happen.
Okay.
That was it.
Okay.
This Wednesday is Jack's birthday. Guess everybody needs an ounce.
Does he get a cupcake?
Cupcakes, doggy bones.
There you go. Okay, Alderman Peterson?
Nothing.
Alderman Jarvis?
Nothing.
Okay.
It was short.
All right, um, I've just got a, just a, a couple of things here. The council has seen hearing dates set for a lot of the information that was discussed at the last planning and zoning meeting. Uh, so, that's a, a lot of what happened. Uh, the date has been set at 4/5/1 for the sidewalk ribbon cutting and welcome 2020 season for the businesses. Uh, more information will be available as far as how that's going to go and what it is as those plans are more formulated, but that's the date that we've set, so it's Friday, 5/1. The film festival had their event this weekend, and I was unable to attend due to other family commitments, but I did see folks that had indicated that they were going to go, so hopefully, they had a good film festival. To let the council know, we have had some computer issues this last week here. One of them specifically dealing with our antivirus system and the buying and selling of companies and the just turning off of systems and the need to scramble and get new software. So, it has taken quite a bit of effort on, on Brett's part to get that done, and some of our computers are still not printing and doing things like they need to, so I just want to make you aware of it. If something funky happens on your end, let us know, because it could be related to that. I will be attending the mayor's luncheon this, uh, this week in Deadwood, and then next month, the luncheon is in Sturgis. And in April, we host the mayor's luncheon here in Hill City. So, we'll be putting together plans for when that's going to occur and all that information. The last thing that, that I wanted to talk about is, I had some conversation with the resident. The last thing that, that I wanted to talk about is I had some conversation with the resident and then I spoke with Travis relative to snow removal in some of our areas. And there are some streets where we have an opportunity to go ahead and extend out the path that we're cutting. But one of the things that Travis did mention to me that I think we should make sure that we communicate out and people are aware of is if there's trash cans that you have that are sitting in the street and not your driveway, that's a real inhibitor for the, for the trucks to just come along and scoop up as much snow as they can to the end. So if there's going to be a snow event, if you could just kind of make sure that you get the cans off the street, that would be extremely helpful. I personally know I have a regular service and we put ours in the driveway and they pick it up from the driveway. So hopefully there, there won't be any problem relative to that. But when we were talking today, that is something that we could help with them to help them do their job better. So that's all I had, let me go ahead and turn it on over to Brett.
Main Street Sidewalk Projects, the only activity that's occurring right now is the railing people continue to kind of bolt those in place. You'll see them a couple of days of the week, just securing that railing in place. The bulk or main part of the project will get ramped up again next month, which is only a handful of days away. I don't have an official start date for them, but completion date for the whole project is May 1st. So I imagine they'll want to get back at it here fairly quickly. So right now, just railing activity is going on. The next item is the business improvement project. The alley part with the additional add-ons of resurfacing the tennis court, removal of the racquetball court and putting in the astroturf and then the additional ADA parking. That has been out to bid now for two weeks. We had our pre-bid meeting last Tuesday. There were two companies that attended that meeting. Some good discussion about the project and fielded some questions. We put out an addendum on Friday of that week, just to address all of those questions. So that's out, so everybody has the same information of what they're bidding on. Bids are due in by tomorrow. And we're actually having the bid opening tomorrow here at city hall at 3:00 PM. I get the time right? And so we'll know what that portion of the bid project is tomorrow. And so then we will review that number. We have a bid board meeting scheduled, tentatively scheduled for March, I think it's March 5th, which is the Thursday, for that group to look over the bids, recommend approval or, you know, alternatives thereof at that meeting and forward it to the council meeting on March 9th. So expecting your packet to see that and, and that there's a request to make a decision on moving forward with that alley project. So that's that part of the project. The other part is the, the restrooms and the addition to the senior center. I was speaking with Buzz Grover last week. There's going to be a slight delay with architect getting all the mechanical stuff, but it should still be here by the end of the month. I'm going to share that with the bid board again on March 5th, so it doesn't really affect our timeline. But it should come to the bid board on March 5th for their recommendation to proceed with the bid letting. And then come to you again on that March 9th for your review and approval to bidlet that part of the project. So we're talking about, you know, the creation of the men's room, the women's room, and the additional space, the new kitchen for the senior center. To answer Alderman Minor's question about the phasing of it, obviously the bid project for the alleyway, we're looking at like a June 12th deadline to get that work done. And that does include the removal of the restrooms that are currently there. To, to address the issue of not having restrooms, we have discussed about the opportunities to place porta-potties in place to fill that void or that gap. And then obviously with the bid letting of the senior center once, and I don't have specific dates on that yet. But once that's out to bid and awarded, they can start construction right away. They'll just need to work with the senior center. And then work, I think the expectation is that we set the deadline for that project to be constructed by the end of the year. But I don't have any firm dates in there, but the, the gap, the stopgap there is to have temporary restroom of facilities available. And so that, again, will come to you March 9th, as expected, to review that and move forward on that project. The next item, the water reservoir project, we already talked about a little bit. I was just in communication with both the engineer and Rural Water today. They are still waiting to hear back information from the federal government with releasing the funds. I don't have any other updates, other than we're still in the dialogue of trying to move forward on that project. We do, I have considered or continued the conversation with them about building that crossing this spring when the 1880 train company that comes in works on their annual maintenance is already in town. That way I can save some money. And so we're talking about setting that aside outside of this Rural Water loan money. And so I'll have a better answer on that hopefully by the next council meeting. And so we're looking at those things and trying to be time-sensitive, saying, look, the easement is in place now. We are ready to go, there's nothing holding us back. We just need to work within the streams of the government loan money that exists out there. So that is the status on that. The Major Lake Bridge project, I submitted, we had to do a temporary special use permit, which I mentioned at the last meeting. That was submitted in, I think it was the 12th, it was that Wednesday. And we expect a two to three week turnaround on the answer to that. So that response, it'll be just two weeks and a couple of days. So I'll follow up on that before that's standing, but everything from our end is submitted in. And so that is the Major Lake Bridge project. Again, that is scheduled for construction this fall anyway, so we're really not losing any time. It still has to go out to bid, obviously, but construction will take place in September, October for that. And I believe that is it. Oh, one, no, there's actually one last thing. Grant money that we had applied for a couple of years ago, it was for the street sign replacement program. It's, again, all of these, all of these programs are federal money administered at the state level by the state entities, the groups, DOT, whoever it is. We applied for that grant money, was awarded that grant money, and now it's time for that process to start ramping up. Travis and I met with, I think it was last week or the week before, we met with the engineer associated to the project for sign replacement. They have gone through and already mapped all of our street signs within Hill City and all of the locations, all of the signs that we currently have. So stop signs, yield signs, directional signs, street name signs. And then there's a few other special, specialty signs. So Travis and I are currently going through that laundry list of signage to verify that that's everything that needs to be replaced and that what they're proposing is appropriate for the community. And so that, we're going to get that to them by the end of this week. So that they can further go through the process of locking in their quantity of signs. And they still need to go out to bid for the production of those signs and then the installation of it. Once we have those signs installed, they're going to do all of the work. Once the signs are installed, they'll do a GPS locate on the signs. So we'll be able to create a GIS level with the county. And we can put it on our maps, so we know exactly where all of our signage is. We can search by stop sign, yield sign, whoever it is, and do that project. So that's going to be ramping up again. I don't have a timeframe as to when those signs would get installed. But it, it appears that that project, as well as all these other stuff that's going on, will fall within 2020 and should be wrapped up by the end of this year.
All right, with that being said, a note, there will be a discussion item on the water reservoir project based on Brett's report out this week, and that will be a discussion item at our next meeting. With no further business, meeting is adjourned. Don't get a motion for that, right? Okay.